Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the meeting of Livingston's planning board. A notice of this meeting has been distributed in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. I note for the record that this meeting has been video recorded. Mr. Klein. Mr. Ratner.
Here.
Mr. Reber. Mr. Diner.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Ms. Pucci.
Here.
Ms. Begoli.
Here.
Ms. Wishnew. Mrs. Santola. Mrs. Santola.
Here.
He's here. Mr. Fernandez.
Here.
We have our form and we do have our board attorney, Mr. Valerio.
Thank you very much. Can you please call, Jack, can you please call the first matter?
Yeah, that matter scheduled for this evening is for a resolution compliance for 220 South Orange Avenue, Block 6101, Lot 45, located in the R5K Zone. Application number 2020-57-PFSB, Livingston Corporate Park Associates LLC.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, good to see everyone again. For the record, Peter Flannery with the law firm of Bisgare Hoff, on behalf of the applicant Livingston Corporate Park Associates LLC. Supportable recall, or some members of the board may recall, about two years ago, the applicant was before this board for preliminary final site plan approval for inclusionary development at the property known as now 100 Eisenhower Parkway, Block 6101, Lot 45, for a four-story multifamily residential building consisting of 166 residential units, two model apartment units, and one unit to be occupied by maintenance employee, plus various site improvements. This was approved by the board on June 1st, 2021, and a resolution was adopted on August 17th, 2021. As a condition of that approval, condition F, there was a requirement that the board retain jurisdiction with respect to the final design of the courtyard for the building, as well as three monument signs. So this evening, we noticed for this hearing to address those, really that single condition for those two aspects, the courtyard and the signs. I only plan on having one witness tonight, who's Mr. Jared Moran, our landscape architect from Bowman. So without further ado, I'd like to have Mr. Moran come up and be sworn.
Raise your right hand. You swear to testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. Give us your full name for the reference.
Jared Moran. J-A-R-Y-D-M-R-A-N.
Thank you. Mr. Moran.
Looks like your microphone might...
How's that? Perfect. Okay, that works. Mr. Moran, just briefly, for the board, if you could state your education experience and licensure as a landscape architect?
Sure. My name is Jared Moran. I am a licensed landscape architect and principal with Bowman. I have 21 years' experience in the field. And I graduated in 2002 from Rutgers University. I've been licensed in New Jersey as a landscape architect since 2010. My license is in good standing. I've been working with Bowman since 2014. And I've been before, I've testified as a landscape architect before multiple boards in New Jersey. I testified here for Kushner Fields and for Livingston Square, Morris Township, Morris Town, Chatham, South Amboy, Hasbury Park.
Thank you. Ask the board, Mr. Moran.
Any questions by the board? Any objection to allowing him as an expert in landscape architecture? Hearing none? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Moran, I believe you have some exhibits you're going to walk through with the board?
I do. So... Just as a brief rundown, so... As Peter discussed, we're here tonight to review the signage and the updated courtyard plan and give a brief comparison to the previously approved design. So what we're looking at here is the, what's listed as Exhibit A1. And this is a existing, sorry, an aerial site rendering. So just to orient the board, the site is on Eisenhower Parkway with Kensington Lane to the south and St. Barnabas Drive to the north. For signage purpose, we have three signs proposed at the three entrances. One is along Kensington Lane and two along St. Barnabas Drive. And I think, can you see, okay, you can see my cursor there, right? So one along Kensington Lane, and then the other two along St. Barnabas Drive are right here. So the sign itself...
And just to clarify before you move on, that exhibit that you just showed the board, this is an older rendering, right? Is it just to orient the board, the courtyard in this plan is not the courtyard that's being proposed, correct?
Yes, that's a good point. This was a site rendering that was prepared for the approved design and was presented at an earlier date. The courtyard that you see here, right, that is the previous courtyard, one of the previous renditions of the courtyard that we'll address.
Thank you.
So moving on to, this is Exhibit A4, Sheet L201. And we can see here, detail number one, monument sign planting, right down here in the lower left corner. So as you can see, the sign itself, it's a simple, clean design. The material at the base is going to match the proposed building. And it will have uplighting to the sign, as you can see here. The planting...
Is it uplighting from the ground or in from the first level of the brick?
From the ground, right. These, these three circles here will be flush-mounted in the concrete pad that the sign sits on.
And the letters are...
The letters, that is, the details of that are still being worked out, but the backplate of the sign is going to be most likely an acrylic or some sort of metal with the letters to match.
Pin letters or engraved into the...
As I know, the details are still being worked out, but I believe there are going to be an additional material, you know, that's added, not recessed, and not backlit. To the right, you can see here, this is the planting plan at the sign. So there will be decorative planting, a mixture of evergreen plants, some low deciduous decorative shrubs, and some ornamental grasses. Okay. This is the signage. So moving on, I'm just going to briefly, this is the Exhibit A2 as Exhibit A1. This was previously presented at a, you know, during the site plan approval stage. We're just simply, you know, addressing this in comparison to the updated design. But I just wanted to kind of point out, the design here, essentially, the four main areas. We have the pool area right here. The dining, grilling and dining area that is to the west, adjacent to the pool. And then we have some, you know, miscellaneous sitting areas. This, there's one, two, three larger groups of, you know, soft seating. And then we have the two lawn areas, flexible lawn space on the west and on the east side of this design.
Just to clarify, is this what is now being proposed?
No, this is what was previously approved. So this is just in comparison. And now I'm going to go to the current design, Exhibit A3. And just in comparison, you know, the, our intent was to take the approved design and just basically take it through design development and construction documentation, right? So just a little more detail. But as you can see, we have, you know, the pool area in the same general location, same general size. We have the grilling and the dining area adjacent west of the pool. We are also including seating areas, some smaller seating areas here, one-on-one seating, and then some larger group seating areas. And then we also adhere to the flexible lawn space on the western end of the courtyard and on the eastern end of the courtyard. So some of the adjustments that have been made on the eastern edge, on the eastern end, the flexible lawn space, we have a pergola for some dappled shade refuge during the hot days. We have a bar, a bar top and a TV. So a little more of an entertaining space we've added in between the dining and the pool. And we've taken the pool and separated it from the other amenity area so that during the winter months, when the pool is closed off, you could still have access to the other amenities. It's not...
So the entire pool area will be completely fenced?
Yes, pool compliant fence, yep, pool compliant. And regarding the planting, you know, we're...
Wait, I'm sorry, what's the east, number four?
Number four. So this is underneath that, it's a little hard to see because it's a pergola overhead, right, with, you know, slats in it, lets the sun through, but it provides a little bit of shade and just kind of an overhead cover. That's the lawn space underneath there as well.
The pool is at grade level?
Pool is grade level, right. So this courtyard is at grade.
It's like those chairs are in the water.
That's right. On the right-hand side, this is what they call a sun shelf, yep. And it's a few inches with the chase lounges in there. So that's the sun shelf, which the approved design had that as well. We've increased the size of the pool deck, offer a little more space for the chase lounges to get, you know, some more people in there. But, you know, overall, in comparison to the A2, you know, it's, we didn't really make many changes, we just kind of took it. And, you know, the lawn spaces at the end on this one have like a curve linear, we went with more of a rectilinear design. But the space is there, functionally, it's all, it's all there, it's all the same.
And all the pool equipment is in the same place that it was on the original pool plan?
So, yeah, the... Even though it doesn't show it on this rendering itself, it is in the approved plan set, right, after this, the original one was approved, I guess we never went back to add this. But one is the pool equipment building, right here.
That was not a part of the original pool?
Yes, it was. It was just, it's just not being shown on that, that original render, yeah.
Is this back to the big sheet we have?
So that large sheet is the A4, what we're looking at right here. So that was submitted, this is the plant list for the courtyard. And yes, that Exhibit A3 is, it matches, it's 180.
Sort of flipped, yeah.
Understand. What the plan that we received is? Because if we have received it, it's...
If we have received it as the original filing, then it does not have to be marked as A anything. And it doesn't necessarily look like anything that you've shown us so far.
So, yeah, so we are, we're comparing, right. This plan, the rendering that we see here, that was previously approved, the way it was oriented was 180 degrees. So to make an easy comparison from the color rendering to the color rendering, we rotated our site 180 degrees. But the plan that you're looking at in black and white is how the drawing set is oriented.
I have it upside down as I'm looking at it, so I have the same orientation.
Yep.
What are we now being asked to approve? The plan that we received or what is now A whatever it is?
Yeah, so the plan that you received is, it was listed as A4 in the agenda. The A3 is a rendering of that black and white plan that was submitted, L201. Those are the only two new exhibits.
Thank you.
A2 is what was previously approved and A3 is what you're proposing?
Correct.
Just from the first rendering to this rendering, it seems like we've lost a walking trail. We've lost a lot more greenery. This is a little bit more sterile than what was presented originally to the planning board. And I know that we appreciate having a lot more landscaping and trees, and it seems like a lot of that has gone away in this drawing.
So I can, I can address the trees in a courtyard, like, in this space. It's a limited space, it's a four-story building, it already casts shade. So these trees that are being shown in the original approved plan, they're going to grow very large and they're not suitable for a space like this. So they have been kept, you know, we do have on the, between the parking area and the courtyard, we do still have flowering trees, although this plan doesn't show them that well, the sort of pink, those are going to be cherry trees, they'll grow a lot larger. So this, I mean, this is a more of a, like a photo reel rendering, right? Whereas, you know, what you're looking at here is a little more vibrant because it's colored, you know, with...
I'm looking at the spaces that have actually changed.
Okay.
So there was a walking trail, and it seemed like there was a lot more lawn space in that particular drawing.
Okay.
And in the one that you're showing us, it's a proposed drawing, there is no walking trail, and it seems like we've lost lawn areas and more green spaces. Would that be accurate?
Well, I would say that we have, you know, more or less increased. I mean, if you want, we could take a look at the walking part first, right?
Okay.
So, so this, this plan has a fence that bisects the, from building to building and over here, right there. So that's what we were referring to before, where, you know, to get from one end to the other, the pool during the winter, this is going to be locked off, right? So we have added a, you know, a separate walkway right here, see? Right? So, I mean, we're essentially increasing the walkway. I mean, if you follow my cursor, this is a walkway right here, all the way around, similar to what it was before. You can walk underneath this pergola, we've added a walkway in, you know, that bisects the area and another walkway here. So, I mean, I would say we, you know, potentially increase the amount of walkway in the space.
And under the pergola to the east is grass, right?
Correct, yeah, this grass stretches all the way underneath the pergola.
Just now, you squared everything as opposed to having it all semi-circled. That's basically one of the changes.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at it, the ends had some half circle on the end here and a half circle on the end here. You know, the rest of the stuff in the middle was rectilinear as well, so...
Are there questions from the board?
You've eliminated the fire, the fire pit?
Yes, the fire pit, we have actually two fire pits now, one down here and one over here. Yep.
You showed bamboo at a couple of locations. How do you prevent it spreading?
With underground, what they call root barrier?
I think the council made it illegal to plant bamboo.
No, the ordinance does provide that it can't be done with a barrier.
Proper control.
But there is a specific ordinance that you ought to take a look at, make sure that you follow it.
We'll be in compliance, yes.
Well, I believe what you're looking at, it's nandina, which is, it's a shrub. It's heavenly bamboo, so it's not the bamboo that spreads. It's a clump form, it's a shrub, but it just happens to have, you know, that, that, the same name that, you know, people do not like. But it's not that typical, your typical bamboo that's going to overtake.
Well, you just want to make sure that you're complying with the ordinance.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Where does the elevation of the pool line up with, say, at the bottom of the drawing there? What, are the apartments right at that same level? Right there by all those umbrellas, are those apartments at grade? Or are they above it or below it? Do they have doors, windows?
So the, the finished floor of the building steps up, I believe it's somewhere around here. This is flush to the at-grade, and then it steps up, I believe it's a few feet, three or four feet above the exterior grade.
All right, so if somebody's at the pool deck level right there, where do the windows of the units right there relative to that? Are people going to be looking in people's windows or out or...
Yeah, it's going to be, so the people's windows are going to be higher than typical situation like this on these...
Higher than six feet or whatever, so somebody's not like...
I would say, yeah, four feet, it's probably between five and six feet to the bottom of the window.
But, because the concern is, one, looking in or out, but then, two, what are the plantings that you have in there and how high are they going to grow relative to the windows of those units or...
Yeah, so in these courtyard situations, like here, it's actually beneficial that the finished floor is a little higher, right? But typically, in these types of situations, that's, that's what you're presented with, a, you know, limited space, you know, a pool is being proposed. And we do our best to use plant material that doesn't grow too tall and block the sunlight from coming in the windows, but gives some sort of separation, right? So that's what we're, you know, proposing to do here as well.
No, and Barry, in our, in our communities, we actually put the patio right on...
A lot of them will have a patio and then a little gate they can walk right into the pool area. Yeah, that's... Right, right, yeah.
Right.
No, but I didn't see those here, and I was just like, are you going to have bushes in front of your window? Or are people likely looking in?
What's going on in your apartment?
I think the large pool, there's always a battle for the chairs. And the more opportunities in these spaces, because the whole idea of these men in spaces are to bring people out of their homes, right? And maybe more into some sort of social community. And by providing more space to do that, I think we could have more...
Yeah, I mean, that's what we hear on, on all these projects is more chase lounge, you know, we can't get enough.
I agree.
Yeah.
One question, just for purposes of the resolution. Is the...
Microphone.
Microphone, dead yellow. The submitted L2.01, is that the same as L3?
Yes.
Or A3?
That is.
The other thing I think that is a positive is to create smaller pocket areas. Because if I, if I have friends over and I come down and use the space and I take one little area, other people I don't know don't necessarily want their friends in my group, and I don't necessarily want... So by creating smaller pockets, you create a lot of opportunities for different... It's like you don't have to look down and go, oh, somebody's already in a pouch. There's four sets of pouches.
Yeah, absolutely, that's what we try and do. And, you know, provide some for larger groups. And for maybe, maybe an individual who wants to just go out and read a book by themselves and not be, have to feel like they're involved with the larger group. So, yeah, that's the goal on these spaces, is to provide multiple seating areas for multiple groups to coexist at the same, you know, same time, same space.
I would agree with Rosie, though, I think you should just take a look at whether you can get a little more verticality with some trees on their side, take it on the west side.
Yeah.
Not necessarily for shade, but just to sort of create a break in the eye, get a little vertical.
Well, so on the left-hand side here, we do have, like, medium over here. Okay. So I hear, you know, that it's a good, a good proposition, how we have, you know, dealt with that verticality. So you can see, kind of like right here, this line, right, that's a, like a screen wall, right? That's with some slats in it, you can kind of see through, but it separates the space. It provides a structure, similar sense to a tree. It provides some vertical, vertical structure. And there's string lights that kind of go back and forth between, to the pergola, right? So that gives you like an overhead canopy, it creates an atmosphere at night. The pergola itself is a vertical structure, you can kind of, you know, go underneath it. We have that down here as well. So I think that is maybe a little more controllable as opposed to trees, even some, you know, smaller ornamental trees grow pretty big. And in a space like this, where you're, you're really looking to, you know, utilize all that space for the residents, it could, you know, come in, come in, and, you know, to be an issue, right, with the, with the, with the trees.
Yeah, but there's an environmental element to me about it, too, because we're putting in a synthetic turf in that space area, and it seems like there have significant number compared, and again, I understand the limitations of the other rendering. It seems like a lot was removed in the way of landscaping. And environmentally, we just want to see in every project that there is enough landscaping and that it's environmentally sound, bringing in a synthetic turf, taking down the trees that were previously in another rendering, limiting the number of landscaping that's there. Just, for me, it's just not, even with the lights and, and that doesn't replace the tree.
I, right, I hear you. I mean, we do, if you zoom in a little bit, you know, we, we do have a significant amount of plant material. It may not be, you know, trees, but we, we do, you know, I could just kind of walk around this a little bit, and you could see that we have a pretty decent amount of plant material in comparison to the previously approved.
We can work with the board's professionals, probably, try to see what we can add or supplement.
Yeah, absolutely. What's that?
Any other questions from the board?
Just real quick, the synthetic areas, those I assume are totally pervious and water is going to go through them and get absorbed into the ground like...
Correct.
As though they were lawn, okay.
See, no other questions from the board? Do you have any other questions for the witness?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any members?
Any members of the public with questions for this witness? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from the public that wants to make a sworn statement for or against the application? This would be your time. Seeing none, closing.
Just as the board approved the proposed courtyard and signage. And thank the board for its time.
Thank you. The parties now having had the opportunity to make a closing statement and it appearing that the applicant, all interested persons and board members have had a reasonable opportunity to be heard, the evidentiary record and hearing is now closed. Any board members that have the opportunity to make comments, thoughts on the application?
Although, although there's always some opportunity to improve landscaping, I think that the selection of materials is excellent and well-balanced. We'll do very well season by season. I assume that you've taken precautions to prevent the deer that are still in the neighborhood from coming through to get to it from the east, I would think. But I think that, what I've observed about the plantings, the comments that have been made about the improvements in the allocation of space and the type of space. And in addition, your willingness to make sure that you're complying with the ordinance about what is called, in many, many ways, bamboo. I think it's a significant improvement and I would be in favor of a favorable result at this hearing. In that case, I would make a motion to approve.
I would second the motion.
Is there any further discussion by the board? Jackie?
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Diner?
Yes.
Mr. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Reber? Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Cucci?
Yes.
Ms. Bagoli?
You don't have any contact sharing their location in the Find My App.
Mrs. Santola?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. I apologize for that.
I apologize.
Thank you.
I think that is it. Thank you very much for a very well-presented application. We really appreciate it. And with that, we are adjourned. Could I have a second? All in favor of adjourned? Now we are adjourned, thank you.